Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting. It's Monday, November 9th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us remain standing as we approach Veterans Day. Let us take in memory all of our veterans that are with us here today and those that have gone before us for their heroic sacrifices and service to our country. Thank you. Have a seat.
Mike, I may be in the wrong spot, but I don't see it on Facebook.
Yeah, and I don't see the link. Usually there's a link at the top of my screen that says "Live on Facebook." I don't see that tonight, Mike.
Let me restart it again. You don't see it now because I'm seeing it on mine. The Village is suffering, Facebook.
Is that the older? Is that the previous meeting?
No, it shouldn't be. Now it's saying, waiting for... It looks like Facebook's having a bit of a problem.
Usually on the Zoom meeting, at the top left, next to Recording, it will say "Also on Facebook Live." I don't see that tonight.
I understand that. I've launched it three different times. It seems to be having a problem on Facebook for some reason. Okay, I guess while you're working on that, we'll proceed. The next workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 30th at 7:00 PM. And the next Village reorganization meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 7th at 7:00 PM with the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees immediately following.
And should we have a roll call?
Oh, yep. Sorry about that. Let's have a roll call vote. So we have Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Gerard.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Alpert.
Present.
And the mayor is present, and the village clerk, Ms. Paffenroth, is present. Village attorney, Rob Magrino. And labor attorney, Richard Glickel. Okay, thank you for that reminder. I seem to always forget that part.
And just to add in, I just got the notification, not only on my top left of my Zoom screen that we're on Facebook, but also my phone gave me the notification that The Village is Suffering is live. So it's a double thing. We are now live. We were not before.
It's confirmed. We're on Facebook.
Thank you, Mike. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing that is scheduled for 7:05 to consider changes to the Code of the Village of Suffering, Chapter 25471, Schedule 21, Fire Zones, to consider expanding the fire zone on Atrim Place. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan. Okay. Mr. Magrino, if you could give us a brief overview of the amendment.
Right. I would just ask first if Ms. Paffenroth, through you, can confirm that she posted the red notices for the public hearing.
Yes, the notices have been published, and it is confirmed.
Thank you. And this was a request, I believe, of the Fire Department and Police Department. They're either Amy or maybe Chief Lockland can speak to this, but I believe that there was a fire zone on half... I'm sorry. There was parking on both sides of Antrim Avenue, but a fire zone, like part of it, and I believe the request was to make the fire zone completely on the west side of Antrim, be getting the apparatus in and out in that area. So, again, I'm going to be the Chief Lockland or the Fire Chief to, you know, weigh in on it.
Yeah, so that'll be Chief Calfer and Chief Lockland. Is Chief Calfer on?
Yes.
Chief Calfer, Fire Chief.
He's unmuted.
There you go.
Sorry, it was not letting me unmute.
It's okay.
A few years back, we created a fire zone on Antrim Avenue on the west side between Lafayette Avenue and the rear driveway to the firehouse to allow us to be able to make the left turn or the right turn off of Antrim Avenue and pull in the back door. Most recently, we've found that there seems to be a lot more cars being parked on Antrim Avenue, particularly between the rear driveway to the firehouse and Clinton Place, making the turn from Clinton onto Antrim to pull into the back door nearly impossible with cars on both sides of the road. So we're simply asking for the fire zone to be extended from where it is now, where it ends at the rear driveway, to Clinton Place. So therefore, it'd be a fire zone from Lafayette Avenue to Clinton Place on the west side of Antrim.
The entire length?
Correct.
Okay. And I know Chief Lockland was also involved in the conversation. Chief Lockland?
Yes.
I just want to confirm that with you also in regards to the fire zone on Atrim Avenue from Lafayette to Clinton.
Yes.
Okay, so that is the designated area for the no parking or the fire zone. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? If anyone from the public wishes to speak, if you're on a computer, just go to the small icon in the shape of a hand and labeled Raised Hand, and do so. On a smartphone with the app, you can just go down to the bottom corner, then tap on the icon labeled Raised Hand. If you're just calling in by a telephone, please dial *9. We have Annette Gonzalez. Annette, would you please identify yourself and your address? Michael, I believe that Ms. Gonzalez, I'm not sure if she's going to speak to the fire zone, but no. Okay, so the public participation will be a little later in the meeting, Ms. Gonzalez? Okay.
How do you know what she's going to talk about?
I have an email in regards to her request.
Interesting. Okay.
Interesting. Once again, if you're using the app, just click on the shape of a hand called Raised Hand. If you're on a smartphone, on the icon that's labeled Raised Hand, or on a phone-only, hit *9. Okay. I guess we'll move forward with that. A motion to close the public participation, the public hearing?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Motion, Trustee Barone. Do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Okay, Mr. Magrino? All in favor? Okay.
Right, so there's a proposed resolution to adopt the local law to change the fire zone on Antrim on the west side, and the location is from Lafayette to Clinton to type 2 action, so there's no secret.
Okay, so I have the local law amending Chapter 254 of the Code of the Village of Suffering, entitled Vehicle and Traffic Articles, 8, Schedule 254-71, Schedule 21, Fire Zones. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Corrigan, do I have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Next resolution is adopting Local Law 6 of 2020, amending Chapter 254, the Code of the Village of Suffering, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Articles 8, Section 254-71, Schedule 21, Fire Zone. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up is the Fire Department with Chief Calfer. Run update, please.
Everything is going well. We just have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one is a resolution to rescind a previous resolution, number 174, which granted the volunteer hose company permission to hold a car wash on October 25th.
Okay, so I have that. Rescinding Resolution 174 of 2020, authorizing the hose company to hold a car wash fundraiser October 25th, 2020. Do I have a motion to rescind?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, do I have a second?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't have the other reso. Hold on. Chief, the next reso is authorizing the Suffering Fire Department to participate in the Orangeburg Fire Department Holiday Parade, December 12th, 2020. Is that correct?
That is correct.
From 4 to 9. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Corrigan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, Chief, anything else?
No, we're actually working on a... This past April, during the height of COVID, we did a drive-by with the Easter Bunny. So we're working on something similar for Santa this year. We'll keep you all posted when we finalize everything.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you very much.
You as well. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Next up is the Tree Committee. Is Ms. Sandy Sted on? She's here, Mayor. Let me just unmute her. Sandy, you should be unmuted now.
I'm unmuting myself. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to keep this brief. I will keep this brief. And just wanted to give you an update and discuss some of the action items. Our Tree Committee was... Our first meeting was October 22nd, and we have a very robust committee. Everyone attended. Charles could not attend, but all of the members, and we've got a lot of good things going. The most important thing is to... I sent out some action items to everyone, and that would be to correct the pruning and trimming of the trees for structural damage. Charles had brought... Charles Burne, trustee, had brought this up at the last board meeting, our discussion, and it was that the trees have only been trimmed. The ones on Washington Avenue, Phase 1, were only trimmed on the one side, hanging over the road. So the concern was liability financially and safety. I had done some research, and we got information from Bartlett Tree Experts, who were the ones that did the pruning. I've sent all of that to you, and it's a link that if trees are not properly balanced, then it's a greater risk, a much greater risk, that they will topple with the storms we're having. We certainly know that that could easily happen. So it's not just the aesthetic value of it, it is the safety. And I had sent you all the links that are there. The most important comment at the end of their overview is the fact that the proper pruning can benefit all landscape trees, but for those growing near buildings, next to sidewalks, or over parking areas, this practice is not a nice-to-do, it is a must-do. So I'm asking that we at least send the RFP out for that section of trees. See what the dollar amount comes back. I'm not aware of what our tree maintenance budget is, but if it's in the budget, I believe we should get it done. Also, the point, maybe Rob Magrino can speak a little bit about it. Charles Burne had asked Rob's opinion on the liability, and he and I have had a discussion. I sent this information over to him, so maybe, Rob, if you could just give a brief discussion, you know, talk about the safety and why we might consider doing this.
Right. Well, as we discussed, I mean, if there... The question that came up last time was, you know, what's the village's liability for, you know, for a tree, maybe that falls or a limb that might fall? And again, if there's a prior notice that the tree limb is damaged or disturbed in some way, that would be where the liability would come in. I'm not going to get into, you know, too many details of, you know, planning going forward. If the board, you know, wants to continue with the tree trimming project, you know, I had a conversation with Sandy this afternoon, and I guess most of the tree trimming was done on only the street side. And the indication I'm getting is they would like to do tree trimming on the sidewalk side, if you will, I guess to balance it out and as part of good practice. So, you know, I'll just leave it at that, that if, you know, that that would be something that if the board wanted to go forward with, you know, would be prudent to go ahead and do. You know, if there... I don't know if it was just cut on one side because the only concern was cars. But, you know, obviously, even if it hangs over a sidewalk or somebody else's property, the village is allowed to trim it if it sees fit, you know, and it's appropriate. So I would... I'd leave that, you know, Sandy had indicated we have some reports. So I'd leave that to the experts as to which trees need to be addressed in terms of trimming.
Okay, and thank you, Rob. I had spoken to the head arborist at Bartlett, and he said since they had already done the survey, it really would not be that much of a difference. They do the walkthrough, and if there were trees that were balanced, they would be left. But if there were trees that needed to be balanced properly for structural concerns, then they would put that into the proposal to, you know, give us a price for that. The other thing is that what they had also said was that... Oh, gosh, kind of lost my train of thought there. But anyway, so I think it depends on the budget, what we have. If we put the RFP out, and it's highly expensive, maybe then not. But if it's within the budget, we should do that. There was also, let me just tell you, because it might come up, the question about grants. Unfortunately, and I spoke to George Profess, who's our Regional Director of the DEC, and those grants are not going to be available this year. They were last year, maybe mid-June, July, you know, mid-year. So we really can't do a tree inventory, and that's what everyone had... It was collectively agreed upon. It'd be great to do a tree inventory of the entire village and then start phasing it, but it seems like it's going to be, you know, cost restrictive. We could put an RFP out and see what that comes back, and if we have the budget, we could do that also.
I think we should just start right now with looking at the trees that need to be balanced and pruned properly alongside the sidewalks and with the RFP, and see what that returns, and we'll move forward from there. I think that sounds like, you know, step one.
I totally agree. I think that would be good.
How does the board feel? Or do you think that would be something that we would like to pursue? And, you know, in particular, pruning the trees over the sidewalk areas that were not pruned or balanced?
I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, I would as well.
Okay. Mr. Zawiki? Is Mr. Zawiki on? Charles is on. Charles, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay. All right, yeah. The RFP that was put together was specifically designed so that the roadway would be at least 13 or 14 foot high from the road, and that the sidewalk side would be at least seven foot high. So a lot of the trees on Washington aren't that tall. They're the cherry variety. So we can certainly look at that, but that was the original... That was the original concept, was to be able to clear the truck traffic and still, and then obviously not obstruct any of the, you know, the residential sidewalk areas for pedestrian traffic.
So what do you have?
Anyway, so, yeah, I mean, you know, we can certainly look at it. I haven't talked to Bartlett. I certainly can do that. But again, that was the logic when putting that RFP together.
Okay, so maybe we could take a revisit it, discuss it with Bartlett, and see which direction we should go, either with putting out another RFP to prune up sidewalk areas and address those concerns if we can.
Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Zawiki. Thank you, Sandy.
Right, and I just wanted to address, Charles, absolutely, the cherry trees that are on the opposite side would not be included. These are just the higher trees all along, mostly along Washington Avenue. And the only other thing I did want to say, there are 67 additional trees that I had done an inventory with pruning and trimming around the pool area. So again, based on our budget, if we could include those in a separate proposal because they have to be surveyed and done. I think it all depends on the budget, but we definitely should keep moving forward for the safety as well as financial.
All right, we agreed. We'll discuss. Charles, we'll be looking into that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.
Mike Janito, while Sandy's still on the line, I presume she's still on the line. Do you recall how much of a line item we have budgeted for tree maintenance in the current budget?
We generally provide about $25,000, but I'd have to check that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next is Culture and Recreation, Ms. Mills.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board.
Good evening.
So a few things that we have coming up. On Mondays and Wednesdays, we are continuing with our chair exercise classes. The seniors are thrilled that they're able to have the classes indoors. So thank you, Board, for approving that, that the classes are able to go ahead. We have chair yoga on Tuesdays and on Thursdays at 10:00 AM. And then Nancy does chair yoga on Zoom on Fridays at 10:00 AM. So 10:00 AM, there's something to do every day of the week in recreation, so we're thrilled that we can continue that. We are keeping up with our Facebook posts. We're getting all the information out to the public for events, for different things within the county, with the different things in the village. The Constant Contacts have been going out through Nancy. She's doing a fabulous job with that. We have been upping the amount of people that have been asking to be part of Constant Contact emails. We're getting requests daily. We send, now that we have an RSVP for our events, when people are reaching out to us to RSVP for events, they're asking to be put on the Constant Contact email list. So we've seen it really jump in the last couple of months. So part of having RSVPs has really helped us get the word out to the village residents and people that want to know about things coming up. So that's really a nice feature of having people RSVP to us for things. The Walking Club at Yorkshire Park, we've had a couple of beautiful days on Wednesdays, and we've had a nice participation up there. People can walk on their own. They can walk with one of the recreation staff on Wednesdays at 10:00. And it's a nice program. The DPW guys did a great job of having the paths cleared up there. They have signs, so people go socially distanced one way around the path, and that's a big help. So that's still going on. We're happy to say that we're still continuing that. I want to follow up to the last meeting that we had, the Halloween trunk retreat. As you know, it was a fabulous success. I was getting knocked out with my computer because it went down on me. So the one thing that I wanted to mention is, DPW, I did not mention in that, in that thank you to everybody. You know, we had great participation with all the different departments, and I wanted to say thank you now to Charles, to Joe, to Stan, and to all the guys that participated in trunk retreat before, during, and after, because we can't do events like we do without the help of DPW. So I sincerely felt terrible that I didn't thank them. My notes were there, and I didn't get a chance to thank everybody. So Charles, Joe, Stan, all the guys, I want to thank you for all that you do for us at an event, before an event. It really, it means a lot to the village. You know, they do such a great job in outside things with all the work that they do. But if you've been to our events, you see how much work goes into them, and I thank them. So Recreation is so thankful to DPW for all that you guys do between Stan, Joe, and Charles. So that was just a small thing I wanted to add in. We had Election Day at the community center, Leo Liden. Thank you, Elaine, for all the work that you did for that, for the center. Thank you, Joe, for everything you did for Leo Liden. It went off smooth, so that was another successful election day. This Wednesday, November 11th, we have Veterans Day. I've been getting a lot of calls tonight, or emails, I should say, for people that wanting to know if the Veterans Day ceremony is on. We are planning on having it. We are hoping, hoping, hoping that we'll still be able to do it outside. The weather looks a little iffy for Wednesday, so if the weather is good, we'll stay outside. The alternative now is to go into the center. So we've been working on that today of how to socially distance everybody. We will clearly and obviously limit the amount of people. So we are working on something of how to get the word out about the amount of people that we can have in the center. So tomorrow's Tuesday. We should know Wednesday morning what we're going to do, but we are, we've got alternative plans for inside and for outside. So we do want to honor our veterans. We're working with the Legion. We're working on the 42nd Infantry Band on this. So we've got a lot of great things happening. We just don't know if we will be in or out on Veterans Day. For the Board, we will, the word will get out to you that morning of where the location will be, and to the public as well. We have winter events planned with different departments. We are wanting to make this a nice holiday season. We are, obviously, the way things went last year is not going to be the same this year. We are working on different events, but that's still to be determined. So by next meeting, we will have more of an update. But we are working diligently to make things happen, make our residents happy, and keep things going. So I think that is it.
Thank you, Kathy. Yeah, you guys have been keeping up, keeping our seniors healthy. You guys have been doing a great job, Elaine and Nancy and yourself. I'd like to also thank Mr. Eric Cudworth, or Sergeant Eric Cudworth, a village resident and a member of the Rainbow Division of the 42nd Infantry, who will be bringing down the band, the Army Band, for our Veterans Day ceremony. So I thank them for their, for their service and their gratitude for coming down to the villages suffering and representing the Army here in the villages suffering. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Good work, and we're building that big base for the, for the Constant Contact. It's, I've been getting a lot of feedback on that also, and it's very informative, and the residents like the information, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you. Chief Lockland, Suffering Police Chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. In the month of October, the Police Department responded to 581 calls for service. The call types varied from routine in nature to emergency responses. We made several arrests charging multiple individuals with menacing with a weapon in the second degree, menacing in the third degree, criminal possession of a weapon in the fourth degree, harassment, criminal possession of a controlled substance in the fourth and seventh degree, unlawful possession of marijuana, criminal trespass, obstructing governmental administration, resisting arrest, multiple counts of driving while intoxicated, as well as multiple vehicle and traffic offenses. This month, in addition to our normal in-service training that our officers receive, we sent two officers to specialized training. Police Officer Ortiz completed instructor development and firearms instructor training, enabling, enabling him to teach police-related courses to our officers, as well as conduct firearms training. Police Officer Samora completed a two-day commercial vehicle weights and measures course, in which she received training that will enable him to weigh suspected overweight commercial vehicles, as well as ensure that commercial vehicles are operating within the required height and with restrictions on our roadways. This specialty is crucial to ensuring the safety of motorists from dangers associated with the operation of unsafe commercial vehicles. I'd also like to mention that in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, the Rockland County District Attorney's Office recognized Suffering Police Officer Ryan Ortiz for his dedicated service to the villages suffering and the people of Rockland County. The last item that I have, last month at the Village Board meeting, the Village Board voted to nominate part-time dispatcher Thomas Conklin as a full-time dispatcher. Dispatcher Conklin has since been cleared by the Rockland County Department of Personnel for full-time appointment. And at this time, I would like to request that the Board, that the Board appoint part-time dispatcher Thomas Conklin to the position of full-time dispatcher.
So I have the resolution here in front of me, appointing Thomas Conklin as dispatcher, dispatcher full-time, effective October 29, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Gerard.
Motion, Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert on the second, do I have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? No, motion passes. Okay, so also, I'd like to congratulate Officer Ortiz and his recognition by the Rockland County District Attorney during Hispanic Heritage Month on his success in the Police Department. And also congratulate him on passing the firearms training course, which is a great benefit for our department, for Officer Ortiz to be able to train our officers. And also congratulate P.O. Samora on his weights and measures class, which also provides protection and motorist safety here in the villages suffering, taking trucks or overweight vehicles off the road that may cause a hazardous condition here in the villages suffering. So thank you, and thank you, Chief. Keep up the great work. You guys are really moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay. Mr. Janito on the Treasurer's Update.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Basically, we have a resolution before the Board to amend the 2021 General Fund Budget. This is for the employee retirements that took place. That was the police chief, two sergeants, and the justice court clerk. In any event, as you know, you established this fund, whereupon we put some of our fund balance into to help pay for those past service costs. And that's what this resolution does.
Okay, so I have the resolution amending the 2020-2021 General Fund, adopted budget for employee retirements. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next resolution is to amend the capital project, which is 2019-001. That's for our Phase II sanitary sewer abatement. Originally, the Board adopted a project in the amount of $1.5 million. Subsequent to that, the project budget has been determined by the Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Zawicki. And he advised the EFC Environmental Facilities Corp., that is helping to finance the project, that the budget will only need to be $1 million. So we're asking that the capital project budget be amended to reduce it from $1.5 million to $1 million.
I have the, I have the resolution amending Capital Project 2019-001, 2019 Phase II Sanitary Sewer Abatement Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, anything on the discussion? So on the discussion, just to make the public aware that the, the funds that were made available were $250,000 in grant funds, and the additional $750,000 was approved by the EFC, which is low-interest rate financing, which this is a big benefit to the villages suffering. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? Motion passes.
The next resolution is to authorize a capital project, establish it, number 2021-003. That's for the Firehouse HVAC system. And the amount of that project is $45,000, $40,000 of which would be, $40,000 of which would be for construction, and the additional $5,000 for financing. So this is to authorize the capital project.
Okay, so I have the resolution to authorize Capital Project 2021-003, 2021 Firehouse HVAC. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Gerard.
Motion, Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan on the second, do I have any further discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions about this. So have we decided, is this a replacement? Is this a repair? What exactly is this? This came up at a previous board meeting or workshop, but we didn't really have any answers what was going to sort of be the best way to go forward.
For that, Trustee Albert, I'm going to see if Charles Zawicki is still with us and that he might be able to add something to it. I don't see that Chief Calfer is on the line with us anymore, anymore.
Yes, hi, this is Charles. Yeah, Jeremy and myself met earlier this week. I was on, we was earlier last week, rather. And we discussed the project. We haven't made any definite determination as of yet, but it certainly looks like we may need to look at all options. And I'm certain that we would probably need to do a total replacement in the hose company, because of the fact that it is, it was originally built with the building. It is near impossible to maintain and access to maintain the current equipment. The equipment is, we spent a fair amount of money through the years to maintain it. It is older at this point. So we are certainly at this point leaning towards replacement, but we haven't finalized that as yet.
How old, how old is the equipment? Can you give us an idea?
I believe it's in excess of 20 years. I'm not certain of the exact, exact age. I'd have to confirm that. Through the years, we've, we've put a fair amount of money into it through the years. And again, it is very, very difficult to access, to maintain the current equipment. And it's, and it's also inefficient. If we were able to incorporate some new high-efficiency equipment, we should see a significant energy savings as well.
Just to clarify, when you say it's difficult to access, you mean it's put into a location that's hard to reach, or?
Yeah, it's in, yes, it's, you'd have to, it's a little scuttle hole that you, that you need to go through. And once, I can't fit in there. Once you're into, you know, once you try to, you know, gain access through that scuttle hole, it's, you need to almost climb through, or you need to climb through on your, on your knees and crawl through to access most of these areas. It's extremely difficult to get in there and properly maintain it. So I think the original design may have not been the best. So I think if we're going to put some money into it now, we're leaning towards like the split units, which are again, very, very energy efficient. But we will, we'll be finalizing that shortly.
So basically, whatever you, if you, if we were to end up replacing it, whatever would go in would be in a more accessible location so that wouldn't pose such a difficulty for maintenance? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? No, motion passes.
The next resolution is a bond resolution prepared by our Bond Council to finance the project for the Firehouse HVAC. And this would require a roll call vote and at least four affirmative votes of the Village Board.
I have the bond resolution of the villages suffering, adopted November 9, 2020, authorizing the issuance of bonds in a principal, principal amount not to exceed $45,000 to finance the construction of HVAC improvements at the Firehouse, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $45,000, appropriating said amount for such purpose. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, I'm going to call a roll, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one more thing. So just to clarify, since, since it's not certain what is required or how much it's going to cost, it sounds like this is sort of preemptively earmarking $45,000 for the work that we don't know the extent of at the moment, to be honest. Having said that, if it's, if it's less than that, in other words, is this going to be a ban first and then a bond later so that we don't end up owing money that we're not spending? Mr. Janito?
Yes, we generally issue bans initially anyway, because bans, the interest rate we get is about half of what you'd pay for the long-term rate. And then within a five-year period, this will probably be paid off within the five years. But if more money was needed, then more money would be brought before the Village Board to be adopted. One quick note, by the way, we're going to, I mentioned last week that we were, I mean, sorry, last month, and maybe at the workshop, that we were going to issue a new ban in November to replace the other ban that we had taken out last year. This is typical of what we do. We pay down so much of the ban and reissue new ones. We received an excellent rate of .55 on the ban for one year, which is really great. We had very competitive bids against our, our money. So it shows that our credit is improving dramatically as well as our access to the markets.
Good work, Mike. That's great news.
I'm actually, the questions that Trustee Albert's asking is making me think a little bit. I mean, we're setting, we're setting aside $45,000. Aren't we kind of setting the tone for anybody to bid on this? That they know that we have $45,000? Maybe we should wait until we get some bids.
Well, generally, you don't operate that way. I mean, generally, we do issue a bond anticipation note, I mean, I'm sorry, pass a bond resolution. So we have the financing in place. Remember that generally, financing is going to take at least 20 days, and then it could take up to 50 if you have a permissive referendum on it. So I don't know that that really impacts anybody in terms of what they're going to bid, because if you're a contractor and you said to yourself, well, I'm going to bid the full $45,000, you may be overbidding for that project. And generally, that doesn't appear to be a problem. But it's up to the Village Board which way they want to go on it. And maybe Charles, Charles, you're still on. If you could unmute yourself, you may be able to add in there anything about how you do the bids and so forth.
There you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, typically, they, you know, the contractors aren't normally affected by that because, you know, once we set the scope of work, it's for that specific scope of work. And they want to be very competitive because they want to get the job, as Michael had mentioned. And, you know, I don't anticipate that being an issue. And quite honestly, most of them are not going to be aware of our discussions here tonight as well. I mean, if they ask, I'm, you know, I'm not necessarily going to tell them. And I don't think they're going to be aware of our discussions here tonight.
Although in fairness, they could go on YouTube and watch it, but just.
Oh, yeah, sure, absolutely, yeah, there's no question about it. But again, it's, I think it's foolish, it would be foolish for any contractor to just bid the amount that is budgeted because, you know, it just won't, wouldn't fly necessarily, you know, be, being successful. And, you know, let's just say hypothetically, if it was, if it was a more of an expensive project, and maybe let's just say it came in higher than 45, and he bid 45, he's going to be losing money. So typically, contractors look very carefully at the, particularly these type of projects, the small projects, they look very closely, and they want to be as competitive as possible so that they can get the, get the work.
Just out of curiosity, whatever you want to call it, where did the $45,000 number come from? In other words, was there some preliminary estimate that pointed to that direction, or what's it based on?
That originated with, you know, Jeremy was working on this earlier. And I believe he, you know, in talking with some contractors, that was the number that we, that he, based on his conversations, had determined that would be a reasonable number to get this work done.
Yeah, actually, Jeremy came up with around $40,000, but we had $5,000 for financing costs.
Okay, is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, Trustee Albert.
Yes.
Trustee Barone.
Yes.
Trustee Gerard.
Yes.
Trustee Megan Corrigan.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. The next one is a resolution to authorize the Capital Project 2021-004. That's for our 2021 roadway improvements. As an overview of this project, the total amount is $587,000. thousand dollars. Twelve thousand is set aside for financing out of that amount. Uh, this actually comprises two recommendations by the superintendent of public works. And I'm gonna unmute Charles if he wants to talk on this issue. But in a nutshell, uh, what it is, is that there is one project for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which Orange and Rockland Utilities is going to contribute approximately a hundred and sixty-six thousand. And the remainder of that project, we will take from our CHIPS or emergency weather, or I'm sorry, extreme weather, or paved New York State aid. Uh, the other is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's associated with just the standard road improvements that Charles had recommended for twenty twenty-one. And out of uh, that amount, we are basically going to have the debt service. Now, we have some unspent funds from previous years for road improvements uh, from twenty sixteen and from last year. And we're going to take those funds and apply them to this project. So we only have to borrow a hundred and eighty thousand rather than, you know, some two hundred and fifty thousand or more. And that's it in a nutshell.
Do we know what streets uh, would be the subject of this improvement project at this point?
Charles, would you answer that question?
Uh, yes. Uh, can you hear me? Okay. Uh, no, we have not determined. We are worked, we have a list of uh, can't, very good candidates. Um, but we haven't made that final determination yet. And obviously, the board will uh, be able to review and approve that list.
Okay. Cause I know, I know I've had a number of complaints about one particular street that I've-
Park Avenue?
That happens to be the one. I've had complaints from residents besides you, besides you, trustee Corrigan. I've, I've had other-
No, I haven't complained. I have not complained. I was extremely disappointed about the sidewalks and the curbs, but it has nothing to do with the road.
Yeah. I'd like to comment on Park Avenue, so um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna disappoint anybody any further. However, um, Orange and Rockland is uh, scheduled to do a gas main replacement on that next year. So um, that would, that road would not be paved this time around.
And yeah, I knew that was coming. I knew that was on the docket. Yep.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing capital project twenty twenty-one badge zero zero four, twenty twenty-one roadway improvements. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, board. And the uh, last one is a bond resolution authorizing uh, the, the financing for the roadway improvements in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, and that again, recall, uh, requires a roll call vote. And at least four votes of the village board.
Okay, so I have the bond resolution of the Village of Suffolk, New York, adopted November 9th, twenty twenty, authorizing the issuance of bonds in a principal amount not to exceed one hundred eighty thousand dollars to finance the construction of road improvements, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is one hundred eighty thousand dollars, and appropriating said amount for such purpose. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Or again? Mo- motion trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion? Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Barone?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Megan Corrigan?
Yes.
And Ray McConish, yes. Bond resolution passes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Janito. This time I'd like to open up the meeting to public participation. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak?
And once again, mayor, uh, we have a four-minute time limit uh, to the speakers. And if you're on a computer or a tablet or similar device, just click on the participants at the bottom of your screen, click on the small icon in the shape of a hand labeled raise hand. If you're on a smartphone using the Zoom app, then you can go to the left corner of your screen and tap on the icon raise hand. And if you're strictly on a telephone, press star nine. And I do see we have uh, one person here, Kathy iPod. We ask you to um, identify yourself and your residence.
Hi, it's Catherine from eight, seven Sussex Court, Suffolk, New York. Hi, Michael.
Hi, Kathy.
Good evening, board, trustees. It's Catherine. So I had one question. I know we approved the purchase of the garbage truck. Did we have a price on that truck? Would you be able to share that with me? That's a budget question I had.
Yeah, the estimated price is two hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay.
And that's coming with a plow as well.
Okay. So we ordered that and approved that already, correct?
Yes, that was at the last meeting.
Awesome. And then the cost for the two new squad cars? I missed that too. I apologize.
Uh, there wasn't two new squad cars. There was previously, there was one squad car and cameras, a camera system. And that, and the total of those two was a hundred and fifteen thousand. The squad car was roughly fifty thousand of that.
Okay. That's it. Someone else can have my rest of my minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Mike, that was, Mike, that was in last year's budget, right?
That's the question I had, because I wasn't sure if we approved the garbage truck and when it was coming. And I know we paid for the, we did the PO for the fire trucks. Then I had questions about the squad car and then the age of them and so forth. Those are my easy questions.
Yeah, actually, I think it was the beginning of this fiscal year that we actually did the um, squad car and cameras. The garbage truck, from the time that we adopted, it had to wait fifty days total uh, in order to be uh, effective, because you have to wait for any permissive referendum, so that might be challenging it. So in any event, uh, yeah, that's, that's what we have so far. And then the fire truck was last year.
Right, right.
Yeah. That, that was definitely last year.
No, that was definitely last year. I just wasn't sure, because I know I see the garbage poor DPW hustling on the streets. Thanks DPW. I'm just collecting garbage in a pickup truck. So that's why I was asking. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we have another speaker, uh, Annette Gonzalez. Uh, Annette, we're going to unmute you. Please identify yourself and your residence.
Hi, yes. Good morning, um, good evening, uh, mayor and the Suffolk Village. My name is Annette Gonzalez and I um, my family and I reside at ten Willow Drive. We've been residents of Suffolk Village for the past twelve years. And um, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight about a matter that affected my family and I during the time of the pandemic. Um, we noticed that the current bylaws, section two twenty dash forty-two of the sewer, water and sewer um, rent appeals board, uh, we only have until uh, August fifteenth to file an appeal on a water bill. But during the month of May, we contacted the water department and advised them of a high bill. And due to the state pandemic, it was difficult for them, for us to retain an essential plumber, because it wasn't really a, it was a non-emergency leak. And not to mention that during the pandemic, the sewer and water department weren't dispatching anyone as either. So we did have a running toilet. So when I spoke to the water department, they said, well, probably that's the issue. And we had that immediately fixed. So now the November bill was almost as high, just a tad bit lighter. But um, a dispatcher was dispatched from the water department and he discovered two leaks. So I'm thinking that all these leaks stemmed from the first leak. So we wanted to know if the board would extend the grievance time, the grievance deadline uh, based on the state mandated laws. And we noticed that on October fifth, New York State has extended the expiration of the annual vehicle inspections, registrations and driver's licenses. And we noticed that also the federal ID uh, enforcement deadline has been extended for a year. So we'd like to know that if um, if this Suffolk uh, village would grant its residents and constituents a uh, extension to the grievance states based on the facts and the situation that my family and I experienced, and based on these unusual times that we're all going through uh, during the state mandated pandemic and stay-at-home laws. Thank you.
It's, it's very interesting. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Um, Mr. Magrino, is, is, is there a, a way that the village board would be able to extend that? And would that require amending the local law?
Yeah, it could. I, the, the, just what Ms. Gonzalez references in terms of the state, those are all based on the governor's executive orders, based on the state of emergency, going back to March. I know the village uh, declared a state of emergency uh, even March, April and May. Uh, and what that enables uh, the executive to do, whether it be the governor or the mayor, uh, is to grant certain extensions, and obeying certain laws. Right now, there is no state of emergency uh, declared in the Village of Suffolk, because uh, covered by the state and most of those items have been taken care of and, and we haven't had the necessity. Uh, I'd have to look into it or determine, you know, if the village wants to do something along these lines, either um, you know, the, the, one of the reasons for the uh, executive orders uh, is to address some of these things in a prompt manner uh, without uh, having to go through legislature. With that being said, it's now been, you know, it's eight months uh, and the legislature hasn't passed certain laws as in others. But um, in any event, uh, if it requires a change to the code, and I'll think, uh, we could either uh, do that, you know, I know, has happened in other municipalities, because of the uh, the situation that we face now, is to give certain temporary uh, authority, uh, again, under a state of emergency. So the, that's the answer. The short answer would be either declaring a state of emergency and the mayor doing something along those lines, which I probably wouldn't recommend at this point, just from this one item, or taking a look at the code and seeing if we need to, to amend it. I haven't looked at it. This is the first I'm hearing of this, so.
Okay, so I think that, I, I think that would be our first step, Ms. Gonzalez, that to, for us to um, take a look and analyze the code and see how that would pertain. Um, that would be our first step. So I think that's what we should proceed uh, with Mr. Magrino. We'll take a look at that. And we'll, we'll start to review it and we'll be in touch with you.
Uh, Ed, when did you receive, when did you receive Mrs. Gonzalez's email?
When did I receive it?
Yes, you said you had an email from her.
Yeah, knowing that she was going to speak tonight. This has been an ongoing uh, correspondence between uh, the billing department, not myself. So it's been ongoing.
Mr. Mayor, would it be uh, appropriate for the board to maybe grant a three-month extension?
Well, this is what, this is what I wanna discuss with Mr. Magrino. So I think that's something that we should look at. We should familiarize ourselves with the uh, sewer, uh, sewer grievance and the code, and really take a hard look at that and see how we can either um, fine tune it or make changes to it, or whatever the recommendation from legal would be.
So if it was prudent for us to amend the code, we could do it at the workshop at the end of the month and give this family some relief?
Well, that, that, once again, once the, if, if we proceeded on, in that course, on that course, it would then have to go back to the sewer um, rent appeals board.
Right. So, but this has been going on for this family for how long?
I don't know. Ms. Gonzalez, when did you first contact the village?
You're muted.
In May.
In May.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Is there, is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, thank you very much for everything that you do for our, our village.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Ms. Gonzalez, actually, before you go, I was just kinda curious. So with the leaks that you had, I, I, I guess it doesn't really make a difference, but I was just sort of curious. Are we talking ten percent more water use, fifty percent? I mean, what sort of?
Well, my normal bill was uh, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. That's a normal. So the bill for me was a thousand twenty-six. And then the bill for um, November was eight hundred and twenty-six.
Right.
Well, we thought it was the toilet, but then, you know, now I have, I, you know, I just wanna see what they can do. And it's, I'm not looking for any kind of um, uh, special treatment or anything. I just wanted the opportunity to grieve this bill.
Now, one, one thing I just wanna add, I, I, I believe I'm correct, uh, but maybe Mr. Janito can clarify this. My understanding is that the sewer uh, value is only calculated during the winter months, which is what you would have been billed for in May, so that your, the sewer rate going forward, you're basically paying for that extra use because of the leak now over the summer, you know, uh, I think. So that might be why your additional bill was high. Am I correct, Mr. Janito?
Yes, the sewer rate is uh, based on the non-summer months. Yes.
So, so basically, the leak occurring during the non-summer months hurts you double, because you, you got, you got hit for it, not only during the non-summer months, but also again, during the summer months, because, because your sewer rate for the summer months was based on your non-summer months. So that may be something I, I, you know, and I don't know, I'm not on the sewer board, but that might be something that the sewer board can address as well.
And that, that, that's, that's why the sewer board is in place, the sewer appeal, the sewer appeals board. And that's what we're going to pursue.
Right. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Uh, mayor, yes, we do have uh, Joe Hunt, president of the CSEA.
Okay.
Joe, you should be able to unmute yourself at this point.
Good evening, mayor and board. Beautiful day today. Um, I'm here to speak about, excuse me, two things. The first thing I wanna really uh, overemphasize is the recreation department. Being a CSEA president, supporting some of their functions throughout this pandemic, they're not just here to do senior functions. They also reach out to the community, to young families and children. Right now, it's a different world out there for the kids. And I think Kathy Mills, Nancy Christopher and Elaine DeFaco really need to be put out there that they are extremely, extremely good leaders for this village and keeping the community tight-knit. And as I sponsored programs with them as a unit president, and I will be continuing to do it, um, again, I just don't want them to be left out on this, mayor. And I know you do very well at times, but again, I think my words really mean something. Moving on to my second subject. On Saturday four-ten, we had an incident at the DPW, and we found some failures in the system. Um, again, the incident was me. I fell off a truck, knocked myself out. Um, the peer trainer program trains first aid CPR and hazard situation. My members responded awesomely. I can't overemphasize. One of my newest members protected me from falling on my face and was able to stop some of the impact, and I landed on my back. I still knocked myself out and went to a trauma unit, but they wouldn't let me get up. The training, that this peer trainer program and myself, from an ASHE and Red Cross instructor, first agency part, really prevailed. David Colosi was the kid that somewhat prevented me from killing myself. And I really wanna put his name out there, and maybe the board will step in with me and give him a plaque for a good citizen award or something. I really don't know how to do it. But on the outside, looking at the film, because we got it on film with our fuel camera, I was able to see everything that I wasn't seeing when I was knocked out laying there. And the response time from first responders from EMS, the Suffolk Fire Department, and especially the Police Department was awesome. I can't believe the minutes of, felt like hours that I was laying there, but I was packaged and shipped. The roughest part of, of my ride was the vibrating strips on the shoulder, because I had a rolled over truck before NIAC. But everybody worked and Jason to make sure that I was safe and healthy and I wasn't damaged. I stand here today to overemphasize the peer trainer program in-house really worked well. I'm proud of all my members, and I am extremely proud of the Police Department. If they knew it was me, they probably would've went for coffee. But again, no names were sent over the radio. But the biggest problem we have, we do not have an address. Working with the lieutenant and the new chief Lachlan, Andy, it's made me make a phone call on a nine-one-one and we found out my landline goes to five Ramapo Ave. That's a shame, because if something really bad happens, and we did have- That's a shame because if something really bad happens, and we did have a little mix up because everybody was going to the DPW office at 61 Washington Ave. Ed Fagan Drive is my main entrance and Ridge Ave is my rear entrance. We need an address here at the DPW. I know that the Street Department, the Refuge Department is the lowest form of the DPW. And it's been proven over time and time again, but I think for the safety of my members, you guys really need to step up and do something with this address because if something happens and they use this landline, they're going to be across the street by the train tracks looking for an injured DPW employee. That was my biggest concern. And hopefully all five of yous can figure it out. I know that Chief Lachlan and Lieutenant Martinez is very concerned about it because they hold pride in response time. And I think watching the film, I think everybody did well.
Good job. That's great, Joe. That's good to hear that. We have such great employees and responders that are highly trained. So yeah, we'll work on that address. We'll take, yeah, we'll look into that. That's that's that seems to be an issue.
All right, Mayor, we have another speaker here, Gertrude. Gertrude, would you identify yourself and where you live?
Yes, it's Gertrude Seifert, 87 Parkside Drive. First, in reference to Joe's previous comment, I just wanted to say glad you're okay and glad to hear that everything worked out for you. My question, this year's election brought up some questions as to property that may or may not be considered right of way. Could you clarify as to what property is in fact right of way? What rights or limits that conveys to the village? And is that in the form of an easement deed or part of village code? Thank you.
So it's interesting. So the the right of ways for the village in its entirety? I don't know. Mr. Magrino, would you be able to speak to the right of ways and where that would pertain to?
I'm not sure what the question meant, to be quite honest.
Would it be sidewalk area, Ms. Zimbalot?
Grassy areas that seem to fall between the sidewalk and the street.
Okay, so those.
Common. Okay.
The grassy areas in between the sidewalk and the curb.
Correct.
Right.
Well, again, it I'll give the lawyerly answer of it depends, but we would also speak to Charles about this. It depends on where we are, but if if it is, you know, the section of property or land that is not part of someone's deeded property, it could be part of the village right of way, either by deed or by just customer practice. There may be a deed, there may not be a deed, there may be. You know, the road may may go up to that point, you know, sometimes the roadway is shown on the map. Includes that portion. So, you know, again, I'm just going to say it depends on where it is. And next to you, Charles is weighing in. Did you want to say something, Charles?
Yes, okay. So typically, the right of way is 10 feet from the face of the curb, inside face of the curb to the edge of the right of way, which normally would incorporate sidewalks. And then the space between the sidewalks and curb. However, there's other areas that do not have sidewalks. So it would be from the curb or the edge of the pavement to in approximately 10 feet from that point. So and that would be, again, typically on both sides. The village that the right of ways are owned by the village is the way I understand it. But they're maintained by the property owners. So I don't know if that was, you know, one of the reasons for the question, if there's people that may not be maintaining that area. However, the property owner is required to maintain, cut the grass, maintain if the sidewalk is in very bad shape, they are responsible for that as well. And I'm hoping that answers the question. I'm not I'm not certain.
Partly it does. What about signage, Charles?
Well, signage, like road signs or political signs, what are you talking about?
Political or any kind of not road signs certainly.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think that's more of a code enforcement issue. I'm not clear on that. I think they would maybe either Mr. Magrino or the Building Department code enforcement might be able to answer that question.
I'd have to read the sign, but I'm, you know, many places have codes that are not, you know, you're not permitted to put any signs in a right of way. The problem you have is if you start you know, going based upon content as opposed to a physical sign. So in other words, if you're putting a graduation sign there, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't matter if it's political versus, you know, some other type of message. Same, I frankly, I'll have to take a quick look at the sign code while we're here just to make sure sufferance is in terms of placing signs in a right of way. Presumably, it's not permitted, but again, either Charles or Building would have information on it.
Okay, would we be able to get some sort of, and I don't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I don't mean right at this moment, but would we be able to get some sort of?
Yeah, again, this has come up a lot in many municipalities, this particular election as well. So in terms of signs and the content, and again, the problem being you can't regulate content, you know, that's where you get into issues in terms.
Absolutely agree. So it would need to either be signs permitted or signs not permitted, not dependent on on content for sure. So would I be able to get an answer after you've had a chance to to check the sign?
Yeah, well, and part of it is customer practice. So I'll be talking to the Building Department and the DPW about that as well, their practices.
Okay. So somebody can get back to me on that or I hate to wait another month, sort of mood points since the election's over. I guess we could technically wait another year, but I'd kind of like to have an answer before that.
Was this year any different than any other year?
Yes. Signs were put up where they previously were not put up in in ever in the years that I've lived here, in the 30 something years I've lived here. And they may indeed be, you know, allowed to do what they did. I'm just, that's why I was trying to get clarification on it.
So were you talking about somebody putting sign in between the sidewalk and the grass areas? Is that your main focus?
Correct.
Oh, that's been done for years.
Not in the condos it hasn't been.
Oh, 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 oh.
Our policy condo policy is no signage.
Okay.
No, no, this year it was allowed and the comment that was made is that it's right of way and that the village owns it. And if that's correct, I was wondering what the village's policy is about signage.
The area, the area you were describing in general was at the end of, I believe.
You're you're cutting out, Steve. I missed the end of what you said.
The area that I believe that you're referring to, because you did make a post to this effect, is after Stonegate ends. It is not actually part of Stonegate. And many, many political candidates had signs there. You were singling out one candidate's signs when.
Now, I singled out all three. I didn't single out.
That same candidate that shall remain nameless was also there. However, that section is generally been past practice used before. I've used it before. Other candidates have used it before. Because is it because it is actually not part of Stonegate. It is an area that is part of, as you say, village, but it's been past practice been used before.
Past practice is it has not crossed the street from where the signs were placed, has been commonly used.
Okay, so will Rob, you'll help us out with that, right?
And yes, and I assume we're done on that subject, but I know I know this did come up. This, now that I know the particular area. And I believe that the code, when we reviewed the code at the time, it was an issue of timing. I think the code, and again, I haven't looked at it. I'll take it. I believe it indicated it had a timing issue of there was 30 days before the election or 45 days and it was it was right at the time or maybe a few days before. But my understanding is that as as everybody's indicated, it's been the custom and practice to leave it. Again, I know I mean, my office is here in Clarkstown. I know they have a law. It's not supposed to be in the right of way, but they're in the right. So you know, it's again, been the customer practice pretty much to.
I know we do. I know we do have laws about when you can put signs out and when you have to take them back out.
Timing, right.
Yeah, it's four weeks. Actually, the timing is four weeks before the election day, four weeks.
Well, speaking to that point, I think that we should analyze and take a look at that code also, the sign code. Because I know in other municipalities also charge a fee if they're allowed to place the signs within the municipality and within the right of way, that there's a fee associated with it that's refundable as long as the signs are taken down by the specified date. So that would take the burden off of our DPW and our guys cleaning up signs that have not been removed. So I think we could take a look at that and Mrs. Zimbalot will get back to you with a more definitive answer after Mr. Magrino reviews the code. Is that fair?
Sure. If I could just follow up, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ed. If I could just follow up with one other question, if if indeed signs are permitted in the right of way, do those right of ways exist in front of private homes as well? And does the same law apply? Because that would mean people could put up political signs in front of anybody's residential home as long as it was in the village's right of way.
Or outside of the right of way.
No, within the right of way. In other words, and I don't mean to single out any single person, but if if there was a right of way that the village owns in front of anybody's private home, could a political candidate put up a sign or anybody put up any sign of something they're supporting or against in front of technically in front of a residence home because it's village property?
Right. So it's a good point. So let us analyze it. And my point was just if they chose to put it after the 10 feet, it would be on their property if there was no sidewalk, say.
Correct, but I'm asking about in the right of way. So if signs are permitted, we're emphasizing, we're focusing on in front of the condos, but the same situation could apply in front of a private home.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, we take a look at that.
Thanks, Ed.
Historically, and again, I'm talking about past practices here. Homeowners very frequently put signs up in their section, as you call it, of this right of way. But people, candidates typically don't put signs unless the homeowner approves. So it's not.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's not as if somebody would take a sign for one candidate and put it on the the right of way of another neighbor that doesn't necessarily approve of that candidate. People are very courteous and conscientious about where they put their signs. And I can speak to that as a candidate, and I believe that every other trustee has, including the mayor, has placed signs and.
But you're saying that condos don't have the same right then. So you're putting signs. I don't mean you, but candidates are putting.
I I'm saying there are certain public areas that are not part of a condo that are just a right of way and not a private residence. Okay. That's that's what your the crux of your conversation is. And again, there's there's a certain spot that's historically been used. And again, you called me out for using it.
But you're incorrect, Steve. It hasn't been historically used. I've been living here for 32 years.
You are mistaken, Ms. Ms. Seifert Blatt. But having said that, I was not the first person to put a sign. I can tell you for the for a fact that when I put my signs out in any kind of public spots that are not somebody's private property, I did not do so unless other people also placed signs in that same.
Correct. You were not alone. That I I agree with that.
Called me out. So I do take, you know, I do take that point to to say.
I don't know that I so much called you out as I called out your running mate because he the rules seem to.
Our signs had both our names, so it's the same.
The rules seem to have changed for Stonegate this year, and that's my concern.
I placed a sign in those same exact spots two years ago.
Historically, there have never been signs on the condo side of the street. That's why the question arose to start with. So I think.
So we're going to figure this out.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
And we will make sure that you get an answer, right, Ed? And Rob Magrino?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor, Bruce Simon would like to speak about the Community Foundation.
Okay.
Good evening, all. Thank you for a few moments. Problem promise less than four. That's my goal. Ed, stop laughing. The Community Foundation is partnering with Sacred Heart Church. Sorry, just blying for a second. We're doing a food drive. Thanksgiving's coming up. There are a lot of hungry people here. Sacred Heart has especially hit hard between the closing of the school and not having the religious ed students, the non Sacred Heart students, the public school students coming in. That was a large part of their food collection for Thanksgiving and for beyond. So we are running a drive through food collection in the parking lot at Sacred Heart. Starting this Friday, sorry, this Saturday, November 14th from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. And again, the following Friday, November 20th from 4 p.m. to 6 p.m. Looking for a lot of these Thanksgiving staples, turkey, stuffing, canned vegetables, gravy, cranberry sauce. Also looking for dried milk, canned soups, pasta, tomato sauce, tuna, peanut butter, jelly, boxes of cereal, dessert foods and gift cards for supermarkets are always welcome. I just wanted to let everybody know again, next Saturday, November 14th, 10 a. to 1 p. November 20th from 4 p. to 6 p. That's for the dropping off of food. The food will be distributed on November 21st from 10 a. to 1 p. Any questions, reach out to me or reach out to Christine Schnabel at Sacred Heart at Directory.
Bruce?
All squared away. Yes, sir.
Yes, if if you can get all that information to Kathy Mills and we'll put the all you if you create a flyer, we can, you know, blast that out on our constant contact so it gets to our out to our residents.
The flyer is actually already on the village website.
Oh, it is.
Thank you very much for that. I'm assuming it was you. If not, I I take back my thank you and award it to whoever it really deserves. But yes, it's already on the on the village website. So if you just want to take that and shoot that out, that would be a great.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else, Michael?
Hey, Mayor, let me take a look to be double sure. Yes, Michael's, oh, it's Mr. Curly. Michael, would you identify yourself and your address, please?
My name is Michael Curly from 84 Orange Avenue, Suffering, New York. Do you have me, Mike?
Yes, we hear you.
There you go.
I just I hear different things going on tonight and I have to say I'm disappointed, okay? I feel we have serious issues in this village. We have Novartis challenging their taxes. We have serious zoning problems. We need a comprehensive zoning plan. I have spoken about this for years. We cheated our children out of their village pool. I ask for more open government. I beg you all to share information with each other. That family with the water problem should have had this problem come to light already and fixed. Enough is enough. Government has responsibilities. Get them done together as a team. There is not much time left, folks. You understand what I mean? Fine. If you don't find, there's not much time left. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else, Mr. Janito?
No, Mayor, no one else. Nobody else on the line, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Zawicki, Department of Public Works.
Charles, you're muted.
Charles, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to update the the board. The contractor for the Wayne Avenue project will be commencing work this week. It's been a long, long, difficult journey trying to get this project started. And obviously now we want to get it completed. But anyway, that's the good news. We started towards the end of this week. I am asking for approval to appoint Mr. Stephen Lennon to the vacant labor's position in the street and refuge. asking for approval to appoint Mr. Stephen Lennon to the vacant laborers position in the Street and Refuge Department.
I have the resolution appointing Stephen Lennon as laborer effective November 16th, 2020. At a pay rate of $18.39 per hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alfred.
Trustee Alfred, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask, so I, I know that, so this is one of the open positions. There are still two additional open positions. Is that correct, Charles?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
So hopefully we can fill those soon as well. Thank you.
We're trying. We're absolutely, uh, trying every day. We're.
Thank you. Thank you.
Inquiring about new applicants.
Filling one of them. Thank you. I know I was pestering a little bit at the last couple of meetings, but thank you. I think.
Sure.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Zawicki.
Okay, um, next item is, um, authorization to solicit a bidding assistance, construction management, and inspection service, RFP, for the Gosher projects. And I believe the, um, the board had a copy of that, um, that RFP. Mr. Magrino had reviewed it as well.
So I have the, the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to solicit a bidding assistant. Solicitor bidding assistance, construction, management, and inspection service request for proposal for the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, projects for hardening of the water treatment plant, and the backup power for critical facilities projects. Uh, on that note, so we have that resolution, but Charles, we need to have the date for the reso. For the proposals.
Okay, um, which, which date would that be? The date of the advertisement or?
When you want them returned.
Okay. Um, well, currently we have a date, um, in the, uh, in the RFP, uh, with discussions with, um, Lori from Gosher. Um, there may be a possibility those, uh, dates, um, being adjusted. But, uh, currently it is December 14th.
Okay, for December 14th, 2020. Do I have a motion for the resolution?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? No, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a, uh, we, a short while ago, we, um, had a road closure on Bonner Circle and, uh, between Milford Lane and Essex Court. We, um, the water department had replaced a water valve. Um, the street department had, um, re- had rebuilt three catch basins and, um, sections of sidewalk were also replaced. So just the, you know, just for clarity on why, why that roadway was closed during that period. Is there any question?
It's now, it's all, it's all complete, correct?
Yeah, evidence complete. Yeah, we're all done there. Well, the evidence is complete.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Magrino?
Charles, can I just ask you to stay on till the trustee's section? Cause I may have a question for you at that time.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, yes. So the first thing I have is, um, discussed this at the, uh, workshop is the, uh, contract of sale with the Housing Trust Fund Corporation to acquire the properties at Squires Gate. Again, uh, I've had an opportunity since then to review a number of the title reports and the deeds. Um, obviously the, the state, um, acquired the properties and, and tried to make the, the people whole, just in looking at the, at the figures that they paid for it, um, that, that the state paid the homeowners. Uh, this property is going to be transferred to the village. Village will take ownership, um, obviously not for resale. Uh, there will be a restrictive covenant on the property, um, that it's to be used for as open space recreation, uh, or wetlands management practice. So this just simply authorizes the mayor to sign the contract and, uh, execute uh, any other documents necessary to have the, uh, properties transferred to the village. Um, and I think the covenant was part of the uh, backup among the items that can be placed there. It might be, uh, you know, small, uh, pavilion type of, uh, structure, but you know, something, obviously the reason for this is because of the flooding in that location. So, um, you know, no, obviously no houses or anything like that. It's for space recreation. It's not.
Okay, um.
Again, this, this had been, had taken place, you know, the village agreed to this several years ago. This is more
Right.
finishing this up and authorizing the final transaction. That's all.
That's what I thought.
Um, Charles, are you on? I just want to make sure that all of those outstanding, uh, punch list items are all squared away.
Just, uh, we're waiting for Charles. The, the contract does require them to be delivered with all the structures removed. But so we, the village will not take title until all the structures are, structures are removed.
Right. We had the fencing, the, we, we had a bunch of items that they were going to address. I believe they were addressed. I just want to confirm it with Charles. That's all.
Yes, uh, we did. I went around with, uh, Mr. Hunt. We took a close look, inspected all the properties. There were three remaining items that we had emailed, um, to, um, the, uh, Governor's Office. Um, we had, there's a couple of dumpsters that need to be removed. There's a fence that's, um, would need to be removed. It's, um, in, it's in very bad shape and actually it's potentially unsafe. That, that needs to be removed. And, um, the silt fence, we want them to remove, remove all the silt fence that, uh, is currently throughout the area there. So those are the three remaining items that, uh, were identified and, um, you know, they, it is our understanding that he, they will be, uh, addressing those items as part of this, uh, you know, final agreement.
Okay. So before I guess we execute the agreement, Rob, we'll ensure that, that, or that doesn't.
Well, before we close, we, we can execute the agreement because I made sure it's in the agreement that
Okay.
it's being delivered with those items taken care of. We did discuss the punch list, uh, last week. And, uh, this is, there's, it's two steps. One is signing the contract. The second is closing and accepting the deeds. We will not do that second part until it's completely vacant. Charles gives the okay.
Perfect. Okay. So I have the resolution authorizing the villagers suffering to execute a contract of sale with the Housing Trust Fund Corporation to acquire certain properties at Squires Gate that have been or will be demolished as part of the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery Project and to authorize the mayor or his designate to sign any and all documents required in the implementation of the program. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The second item came up, uh, and Charles, I'll just ask you to stay on. Uh, it's the agreement with Orange and Rockland on the, uh, road restoration, uh, cost sharing. Uh, I believe we had, the, the village had, uh, plans uh, for the project. Orange and Rockland is doing work. Uh, obviously it would make sense for Orange and Rockland to do the work uh, after we've done ours. So we've entered into this, uh, cost sharing agreement. Um, and Charles, if you want to address that a little more fully, uh, from the practical standpoint in terms of and when the DPW will go ahead and, and, and I know we, we met on the particulars of which entity was going to do what. I believe they were doing it up to a certain point and then the board, then the village would take over. Is that correct?
Um, can you hear me? Am I on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good. Okay. Um, all right. So that, um, was, um, something that, uh, Michael spoke of earlier as part of that, um, capital improvements, uh, for 21, 2021 roadway improvements. Um, so that, um, 166,000 and change would be incorporated into that, um, into that project. So, um, what we're doing there is essentially, uh, O and R is paying us for the areas that they disturbed. And then we, the undisturbed areas, we would be, the village would be paying for to have the roadways milled and, uh, resurfaced. So rather than just having them do that, what they were responsible for, you know, just having portions of the roadway milled and resurfaced, this would enable us to, um, do the entire roadway. And this is, uh, the second agreement. We had, we had a previous agreement, um, that was uh, I guess a couple of years ago, we had the previous agreement. So this is very, very similar to that, uh, first agreement.
Okay. Um, so we have the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a road restoration cost sharing grant, Orange and Rockland. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Or any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Trustees, I know Trustee Albert said you had something.
Yeah, I have a couple of different things.
Okay.
Been, uh, residents that have contacted me about different concerns that I, uh, I think, uh, hopefully we can get some resolution. Uh, one resident contacted me about noise uh, that they can't concentrate because this constant, uh, shooting at the, um, at the, uh, gun range. And in fact, I believe they spoke at the last meeting and they were informed by the chief that it was not the police that was practicing at the gun range. That was the belief, I guess, this resident had, but it was, you know, I guess private, the, the sportsmen association there, you know, just private people that shoot there. So it, it brought up a question and there was a couple of other emails back and forth where the resident is like, well, wh- what can I do? And so I happened to look it up and I see that there's a prohibition in the Suffolk E-code, uh, section 175 dash 3 prohibited noises. Uh, item K includes explosives, firearms, and similar devices so as to create a noise disturbance. And, um, so I recommended to the resident that they contact the police. I don't know if that's the correct place, but that they contact the police if such a complaint, you know, if they, if they have such a complaint. Um, and then the resident contacted me after that, that there was an issue where the dispatcher didn't want to take the complaint. So I contacted the chief about that and apparently that's been resolved. But I guess I'm not sure that that was the best way to proceed with this sort of complaint. And I would, I guess, ask, is there anything that could be done? Uh, I, I was also led, uh, to learn from, uh, the chief that, uh, the village actually owns the, the shooting range there, that it's leased by the sportsmen, the Rampos Sportsman Association. So is there anything that we can mandate soundproofing wise so that it's less disturbing to the local residents? Cause people do live very close to there. I'm fortunate. I live on the opposite end of the village. I don't hear it, but, but, uh, you know, I, I feel terrible for people that are trying to eat their, their, their lunch, dinner, whatever, and they're hearing pow, 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 pow. It's, it's, it sounds like a war zone, I'm sure. And they did send a recording of it and it sounded terrible. So I guess what can we do about this nuisance sound? Especially since we do have something on the books that addresses this exact issue. Mayor, you're muted if you're talking. I'm not sure.
Well, we kind of would have to research that and get everyone's opinion and see what we could do. It can't be resolved in tonight's meeting.
No, of course, of course. I'm just looking for like, who should the resident, you know, reach out to? You know what I mean? Is this is.
Well, she reached out, she reached out to all of us. So I think as a board, we need to figure that out.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was just me, cause, uh, I, I, I definitely had some private emails with them. The second question, uh, that, uh, another resident brought up was, uh, terrible smells in the West Ward, uh, in the vicinity of the sewage treatment plant. Um, and now I know that we've had issues that are being worked on and, and maintained, uh, by JCO. Um, but, um, I would like to get a good sense of, of where we stand and whether there's certain hardware, certain equipment that's specifically not working that if we need to bring someone else in to repair, we should do so because, uh, you know, I don't think any resident should be forced to smell sewage while they're trying to eat their dinner.
Well, I think Mr. Zawicki would be able to speak more, um, to those points, but also the upgrades and modifications that are will be going out to bid in, in the near future will, um, will rectify most of the issues that persist at the aging wastewater treatment plant. Um, the bid, the bid should be going out in January, I believe. Mr. Zawicki, if you're still on, can you elaborate somewhat on the bidding process and the two projects that we have that will be going forward in a phased approach?
Uh, yes, there's going to be, um, the upgrade is, um, is, uh, set up for two. It will be, uh, it, um, consists of two contracts. The first contract would be for the headworks. The design is, um, essentially complete and currently being reviewed, uh, final review by the, uh, the DEC. And I, um, I believe that's, that's going very well. Um, the bids, we should be going out for bids. Um, I would say in, uh, January and that work would start in the spring. And that, the headworks is, um, where the, um, yeah, the, uh, inflowing comes into the plant. So everything that comes into the plant from the various locations of the village comes into the headworks. Uh, that would be totally revamped and, and, and redone. Um, the second contract is, um, currently being finalized. The design is being finalized. We should have that, uh, ready for DEC review. Uh, I would say within the next couple of months. And, uh, that work would probably start later, the latter part of next year. Probably looking at, uh, a, maybe a summer or fall start for that, that work. And once that's all completed, um, the wastewater treatment plant should be in much better shape than it is currently. And, um, I know it's, I know people just don't want to, um, you know, it's an unpleasant smell at times and, uh, we, you know, I know the, uh, the operators are doing their best to, on a day-to-day basis to try to minimize the odors.
Right. So, uh, Charles, just to kind of touch on these a couple more, I have a couple of questions further in this regard. One would be if the projects are starting next year, the planned completion could be several years off. Is that correct?
The, um, projected completion is in 20, um, I believe it's 23. Yeah. So it is a couple of years off.
So, so I mean, we're, you know, basically we're asking residents to live with these terrible odors for several more years. Uh, and I'm wondering if, if there's not something we can do sooner, uh, you know, so I, I also kind of want to ask what, you know, whether there's any issue with the holding tanks or anything like that, 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 uh, the residents should be aware of? As far as you know?
Well, the, uh, the second contract is going to be addressing the, um, a number of, uh, uh, features in the wastewater uh, plants. It trickling filters and the primary clarifier. So, um, we are, the, uh, design that, uh, the original design that goes back to the early eighties, um, is, is problematic and it's been a, been an issue for, for decades and trying to resolve it. Um, this particular project would fully address that. Uh, what happens is the mechanisms, uh, end up, um, falling into the tank. They come, they come loose. They fall into the tank and, um, a lot of times it happens, um, when there's, because we only, we only have, um, a, a one shift at the, uh, the plant. A lot of times these, these, um, disruptions happens after hours and we don't really find the, uh, find the problem until you come in, the, the, uh, operators come in early in the morning. So, um, and really it's, it's something that really needs to be, um, redone. And, 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 and again, this, uh, upgrade addresses, addresses that, that I certainly will meet with, uh, the operators and, um, we have had some discussion. We'll continue having discussion to see if what at all possible can be done. Um, and I understand the. Um, and I understand the concerns and, uh, we'll make every effort to reduce the odors the best as can, best we can.
What, what about the air misting systems? Are they in operation or are they not working properly either?
Um, well, they're, um, as far as I know, as far as I know, they are, they are working. Um, but they don't seem to be, I think the general consensus is they're not as effective as we would hope them to be. Um, so, but, um, you know, again, that'd be something that we could, uh, I'll sit down with the operators and we'll, we'll see what actions can be taken that haven't been taken and see if we can improve, improve the, uh.
Is there some sort of deodorizer or something at least temporarily that could mask the smell even, even if things are not quite as good as they should be, you know what I'm saying? So, I was, I feel terrible that there's residents that live in the proximity of, of plant that are, you know, it's great that we're going to start a project in the spring, but they have to live with this for the next several years. I don't think that's fair to ask them to do that when they're paying taxes. I, I just think it's wrong and I think we can do better. And I think if we have to bring in different people than JCO to do it, I think we should do that. We should address this situation and, and, and get a temporary fix while we're working on a permanent fix. I don't think people should be forced to wait.
They just.
Well, I, you know, you, you bring up a good point. I mean, we, we certainly could, um, you know, get some, another set of eyes on this to, uh, to see if we're missing anything and seeing what can be done. And that, uh, that might be a good approach.
They do, just so, just so you know, Steve, that there is, there is the misting, the, the odorizer, and they also add the odor reducing chemical into the, uh, into the sludge processing. So it, it is taking a lot, but Mr. Zawiki, you could look into that. Um, also, I know that JCO also, um, did answer some of the questions and concerns, but it is very concerning. I know we had, uh, residents also call me directly and express their concerns and we are looking and addressing it.
So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, we'll, we'll just call it through the grapevine. I'm hearing that they're not really using the misters, even though they're there. So, I, I, you know.
Um, well, it's my, my understanding that they are being used.
They are using the misters, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And the, um, and what the mayor had indicated before in the, in the, um, the sludge building where the, um, the, um, de-watering activities take place, we do add a proprietary chemical. Uh, it's a, what, it's V X four, uh, four fifty-six to, um, the sludge to reduce odors. That's pretty effective. That, that part of the odor control, um, operation is, is very effective. The, um, the misters and the per- perfume, I guess we kind of characterize as almost like a perfume, trying to hide the, uh, the odor is not as effective as we would hope it to be.
Right, like, I, I just want to add one more thing. I mean, I mean, uh, two years ago, two years ago, before I became a trustee, I, uh, you actually gave me a tour, Charles, of the sewage treatment plant. Uh, or maybe it was when I first got elected. I, I, I don't remember if I was sworn in yet, I think is what it was. I was elected, but not yet sworn in. And, uh, the smell over there was not terrible. It was not something I would want to be there or live there, but it was not terrible. It seems, something seems to have changed more recently that, that we have, uh, complaints.
Well, the warm weather also snaps it up. So we had a lot of cold weather and I live pretty close to it. So we've had, and it seems to be a pattern, when we have a lot of cold weather and then we have a lot of warm weather, the smells when it starts to get in between that time does not vent very well. So, you know, unfortunately, we live in the downtown and I get to have that smell as well. But, you know, I, I think that Charles has given you, you know, you've given Charles the information and let, let's have him get another set of eyes on it and we can go from there.
Sounds good. If we get another set of, I think that would be.
Yes, okay.
All right, thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Um, I just want to, uh, say this is, um, this is my last, uh, village board meeting. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to, um, thank the board, um, thank the department heads and the employees, um, very professional and a, a joy to work with. I mean, that's a shout out to, you know, the attorneys, the treasurer, um, DPW, uh, the police force, union leaders and members, um, fire department, rec department, employees in village hall. Uh, it's been a wonderful experience. Um, um, I, I appreciate, um, the turnout of voting this year. So that's hats off to, you know, residents and voters. I mean, it wa- it wasn't easy to do this year, but fortunately we had a lot of options and, um, you know, we got record turnout and I'm sure that we've gotten a lot of young people in the village engaged as well. So, um, I think that's great. And then just in general to all the residents, I, um, I appreciated, um, representing you. And, um, I hope that more residents, um, that care, take an interest in representing the village and the residents. Um, but I, I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Paul, thank you for your service. It was a pleasure to serve with you.
Yes.
Yes, it has been a pleasure. You've been a dynamic team leader and partner, and thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
It was, it was a pleasure running with you as well two years ago.
Okay, anyone else? All right, hold on. Next I have a resolution here authorizing an independent contract agreement with Christine Anderson for thirty-two hours over a four-week period. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion pass.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. I can make a motion to enter into an executive session for personnel.
That's not on the agenda.
I'm calling for the executive session now. Do I have a motion? I think it's in the best interest of the board to enter into the executive session.
Why isn't it on the agenda?
Wasn't on the agenda. It just brought to my attention today.
Well, you had time to update the agenda.
If you want to make, if you don't want to make the motion to go into an executive session, that's fine, but I recommend that we enter into an executive session for personnel matters.
You know, Ed, you do this crap all the time.
Excuse me, but I don't think that language is actually acceptable in a board meeting.
You are a hundred percent correct.
Yep. Do I have a motion? No? Okay, motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
I, 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 I mean, I just, I would like to know, like, I guess a little more about what it is, you know? Because it is a surprise. That's, I agree, you know, usually we are notified.
Mm-hmm, it was a.
So then why don't we, why don't we do this, Ed? Why don't we have a special meeting, say on Tuesday or Monday? And then you can let us know what the issue was, where, why we need to have an executive session.
Well, um, Mr. Mr. Magrino, how should we proceed in this, um, executive session? Would it be in the interest of the board to?
I believe that something came from council earlier today. So, you know, you can certainly go into executive session to consult with council or, you know, I mean, technically you don't need to call an executive session, but that's what it would be in essence.
I guess.
So then we can take care of that on a special meeting, uh, one day next week, correct? Is this a, so.
I think it would be time, it's time sensitive to not put the village in a situation. Is that fair to say in some degree? I'm, I don't know how to, um.
Well, I, I, I don't know if the board is aware of what, what the, the item was to consult with council. If the board doesn't wish to meet, they don't have to meet. If they want, if you want to set an executive session for another time, you can do that. Uh, the board has the.
All right, so let's set one for Monday and find out what's going on.
Let's walk through what we're going to do here. So the board does not, the, the board does not want to go into an executive session now. Is that, let's take a vote.
Why don't you pull the board? Why don't you pull the board?
Mr. Albert, Mr. Albert, would you like to?
I'm willing to go to an executive session to have a discussion about the matter. Now that, now that I have an idea what the matter is.
Mr. Barone?
No.
No. Yes. Uh, trustee Corrigan?
No, I'd like to do it on Monday.
Mr. Gerard, trustee Gerard?
Yeah, can we get brought up to speed on what it is and so we have a little bit of, uh, background before we just go into something abruptly?
Yes.
Maybe we need a few days.
I don't see why Monday wouldn't be okay.
Well, we have to see if the board's available. That's one thing.
All right, so is the board available for Monday?
Hold on here, hold on, Ms. Corrigan. So the board is not entering to an executive session. Does the board want to go into, hold a special meeting on Monday? Mr. Albert?
I, 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 I could do it.
Okay, Mr. Barone?
Do it.
Okay, trustee Corrigan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Monday at seven P M.
Sixteen.
Monday the sixteenth, seven P M.
What's the purpose of the special meeting?
Thank you.
What would, what, how would we deem that purpose, Mr. Magrino? You're aware.
Well, if you want to say for purposes of entering into an executive session to consult with legal counsel regarding, claims?
Yes. Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, um, motion to close the meeting.
Motion, Corrigan.
Corrigan, do I have a second?
Back.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.